I assume we're down to one and go now. I'd like to call this meeting of our Board of Trustees to order. And first thing we always do is do a pledge. General Huber, if you would do that, lead us in that. I appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General, we have a tradition that's been going on for a little over six years, and I'd like for you to carry that on at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Smith, Board members, President McPhee. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege today to introduce to you Uriel Yumu Tony. Born in the Democratic Republic of Congo in the year of 2000, her father was the recipient of a lottery visa, and in 2002, her mother and her younger sister came to the United States of America for critical heart surgery. Amazingly, her father then, in 2004, again won a lottery visa, and Uriel came to the United States in 2004. In 2013, she earned her U.S. citizenship. So now, 10 years later, in August of 2023, she will receive from this incredible university her Bachelor's of Science in Public Health, and she will be commissioned as a second lieutenant in the Tennessee Army National Guard. Ladies and gentlemen, Uriel.
Can you hear me? All right. Hi again. My name's Uriel. As General Huber has mentioned, I am a senior. I believe I do grade one. Questions are being asked before I spill so much. So any questions? Or should I just go towards why I chose MTSU? All right. I chose MTSU in 2019, which was after I've done my basic in AIT in 2018. I chose it because of the military connection it had. I wanted to choose a university that was close to the unit I'll be going to drill often and that I could be able to maintain that connection. Because I'm not a natural-born citizen, I wanted to understand this military aspect that I just joined. So the best way to do it was to join a university that had a strong connection, which goes towards why I joined all the other organizations, as well as ROTC. ROTC provided a way for me to understand the cultures, the aspects, and all the values of the military, of not just Army but other branches as well. And joining Bravo helped me get more in-depth of the military, specifically of all the branches, and how they help the veterans. So those were my reasons, and they've been very beneficial for me and my growth of connections and resources.
I have a small token of our appreciation for you serving and coming. You are, like I say, another, you're part of the American dream.
Thank you.
Thank you. And getting right into business, turn it over to Dr. McPhee, who has some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. It's my pleasure to welcome some very special guests. We have three colleagues from THEC that are observing our meeting today, and I would like for us to give them a true, blue, warm welcome. Stephen Gentile, who's one of senior policy analysts, give him a round of applause. We also have Crystal Collins. Crystal, good to have you with us. And Victoria Harpo. Victoria?
Thank you. We have a great relationship, working relationship with THEC, and as always, we appreciate the good work that you all do for higher education in the state of Tennessee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Part of chairman's duty is to run an efficient meeting, and that's what we'll start in. James, would you please call a roll?
Yes. Trustee Baker?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Present.
Trustee Cottle?
Here.
Trustee Delay?
Here.
Trustee Karboriak? Trustee Karboriak, because you are participating in this meeting electronically, in accordance with TCA 8-44-108, there are two questions that you will need to answer for the record. First, are you able to hear me and the other trustees clearly so that you can participate in this meeting?
I can.
Second, are there any other individuals in the room with you? And if so, please identify them.
There are none.
The minutes will reflect that Trustee Karboriak is able to hear those present in this room and that no one is present with her. Chairman Smith?
Here.
Trustee Wright?
Here.
Trustee Carpenter?
Present.
We have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, James. Now's the time for us to review the minutes. Anybody have suggestions, changes, comments that need to be made? If not, I'd like to have a motion to-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? I think because we have Chris on the phone, we need to take a one-by-one roll call, and I'll ask Secretary to please do that.
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approve.
Trustee Cottle?
Approve.
Trustee Delay?
Approve.
Chair Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chair Karboriak?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Trustee Wright to give us a committee report.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Smith. Academic Affairs, Student Life, and Athletics Committee met on March 14, 2023. The committee approved the minutes from its November 15, 2022, meeting. Today, I would like to present two action items for the board's consideration. In accordance with University Policy 251, approval of academic programs, units, and modifications, all academic actions that require review and approval by THEC must be approved by the Board of Trustees. At our last committee meeting, Vice Provost for Academic Affairs, Dr. Amy Aldridge Sanford, recommended approval of five new master's degree programs, all at 30 credit hours with full online delivery options, which included: one, Master of Arts in Organizational and Professional Communication; two, Master of Science in Digital Media; three, Master of Science in Music Business; four, Master of Science in Project Management; and five, Master of Science in Tourism and Hospitality Management. These programs were particularly designed to accommodate working professionals. The committee unanimously approved Dr. Sanford's recommendation. The second action item before the committee was the recommendation to award an honorary degree. An ad hoc committee of faculty and staff has reviewed and recommended the nomination of Mr. John Floyd to receive an honorary doctorate degree. In concurrence, President McPhee recommends to the Board of Trustees that Mr. John Floyd receive an honorary doctorate degree at the August 2023 commencement ceremonies. And the committee also unanimously approved awarding this honorary degree. Information items before the committee included: the annual report of academic program actions, an applications and admissions report, and an update on athletics. So, Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining the committee's actions were made available for your review prior to this meeting are in your board notebooks. And that concludes my report, and I would also like to make a motion for approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Additional discussion or questions?
The board notebook on Mr. Floyd's nomination to receive the degree says May, but is he doing that in August?
In August.
Okay. Just, I made a note of it.
I think we have swapped dates.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So noted, and thank you. We just want to make sure the minutes, James, reflect whatever's correct.
Yes.
We have a motion? It's been seconded, or has it been seconded? Who's seconded?
I seconded.
Tom seconded?
Questions, Steve?
Yes.
The Master of Science in Project Management, do we have an undergraduate degree in project management and/or a certification program? Neither one? And Mark, is there a reason we don't have an undergraduate degree or certification program?
Looking for my helper in the audience. I don't know of one. We'll definitely take a look at it and talk to the college and see if that's something that, you know, the AACSB accreditation limits the number of different programs that they can have, and so it's always a juggling act trying to figure out what are the most attractive, most vibrant programs. So that's one sort of restriction on what they can offer, but we'll talk to the college and see if they think that's something that-
This is anecdotal, but I'm hearing a lot of interest in project management, particularly certification for people who have gone in some other direction and now move into project management, but an undergraduate degree probably be good as well, so thank you.
We'll take a look.
Will you give a committee report on that when our, this next committee?
I will.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Excuse me, Mr.-
Roll call.
We'll need to have a roll call vote on this.
Yeah, I'll forget it again, probably. Go ahead, James.
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approve.
Trustee Cottle?
Approve.
Trustee Delay?
Approve.
Chair Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chair Karboriak?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Tom, you're next.
All right. Thanks, sir. The Audit and Compliance Committee also met on March 14 of this year. The committee approved the minutes from the November 15, 2022, meeting. At this meeting on March 14, there were no action items brought before the committee, but the committee did have a number of informational items, and they are: report of conflict of interest disclosures in 2022; review of the president's statement of disclosure of interest for 2023; a report on compliance with public records policy; the results of external reviews, including the following reviews. The first one is the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury Financial and Compliance Audit Report for the year ended June 30 of 2022. Secondly, the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury, NCAA, agreed upon procedures applied to the athletic program statement of revenue and expenses for the year ended June 30, 2022. The next one is the Tennessee Department of Transportation Finance Office Fiscal Monitoring Section dated December 20, 2022. And then the U.S. Small Business Administration Financial Examination of the Tennessee Small Business Development Center for the program year of 2020. And then finally, the Quarterly Report Results of Internal Audit Reports was, excuse me, reviewed as well. So the public hearing, excuse me, the public meeting of the committee adjourned, and the committee went into executive session to discuss audits and investigations at that time. So Chairman Smith, that concludes my report.
Should we assume there'll be a follow-up at the next committee meeting on investigations?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Next, Christine, are you, you ready?
I'm sir, Chairman Smith. Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Super. Again, thank you, Chairman Smith. The Executive and Governance Committee met on March 14, 2023, as well. The committee approved the minutes from its March 15, 20, I'm sorry, it was March 14, 2023, and the committee approved the minutes from its March 15, 2022, meeting. One action item was brought up before the committee. Associate Provost Mary Hofswely presented for approval the institution's mission statement and mission profile. TCA Section 49, 8, 10, I'm sorry, 48, 49, 8, 101D requires the institution to annually submit its institutional mission statement to THEC for review and approval. Dr. Hofswely reported that on February 17, 2023, the university planning committee approved proposed revisions to the university's mission statement and mission profile. Textual changes are proposed for accuracy and clarity. The committee unanimously approved this action item. Upon our approval today, the university will present the mission statement and mission profile to THEC in fulfillment of this statutory requirement. Chairman Smith wrapped up the meeting by informing the committee that he recently completed the president's annual evaluation in accordance with board rules. He sent a copy of the president's self-evaluation assessment to each board member via U.S. mail. Chairman Smith acknowledged that he met with Dr. McPhee, discussed his self-evaluation along with the board comments and suggestions, and reported that the institution has had a successful year. Chairman Smith highlighted some of the accomplishments, including: a record-breaking fundraising, new corporate degree partnerships, national ranking by Princeton Review for the fourth consecutive year, and the annual audit by the State of Tennessee Comptroller's Office with no findings. Chairman Smith stated that he had provided Dr. McPhee with a written assessment of his completed performance review. Mr. Chairman and trustees, materials outlining the committee's action were made available for your review prior to this meeting and are contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman and trustees, that concludes my report, and I would like to make a motion for approval.
I guess I'm the one that has to second it. I'll second that. Let's have a roll call vote, James.
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approve.
Trustee Cottle?
Approve.
Trustee Delay?
Approve.
Chair Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chair Karboriak?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you, sir. Next, Trustee Delay.
Thank you, Chairman Smith. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on March 14, 2023. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge and express appreciation to the former chairman of our committee, former member of our board, and devoted alumnus Joey Jacobs for all he has done for our university. The committee approved minutes from the November 15, 2022, meeting. Today, I would like to present one action item for the board's consideration. This item was a request for approval of the permanent appointment of Vice President of Information Technology and Chief Information Officer by President McPhee. Ms. Yvette Clark has been serving as the interim Vice President for Information Technology and Chief Information Officer for the past year. Dr. McPhee discussed the exceptional job Ms. Clark has done in the role as interim, and with her many years of experience in this area, as well as her breadth of knowledge, recommended her for the permanent role at the requested salary. The committee unanimously approved this appointment. Two information items were presented to the committee, including: update on the governor's budget and legislative budget hearings, and update on the higher education emergency relief funds spending plan. Mr. Chairman and trustees, the material outlined in, by, excuse me, the material outlining the action by the committee was made available for your review prior to this meeting and is contained in your board notebooks. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and I would like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? James, would you please conduct the vote?
Trustee Baker?
Approve.
Trustee Boyd?
Approve.
Trustee Cottle?
Approve.
Trustee Delay?
Approve.
Chair Smith?
Approve.
Vice Chair Karboriak?
Approved.
Trustee Wright?
Approved.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Now it's time for the president's report. Ms. President?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, and members of the board. I always begin this report by saying that I do appreciate the opportunity to update the board on matters and activities at the university since our last meeting. So I'll begin with our Fall 2023 Recruitment and Enrollment Report. I want to share that update as of April 1 this year. Our freshman applications are up by 1,552 students. That's a 13.4% increase. Our admitted freshmen are up by 397 students. That is a 4.8%. Our transfer applications are up by 82 students. That's 4.9%. This is particularly gratifying to us, knowing the, some of the issues that our community colleges are experiencing with enrollment decline. This is quite an achievement by our staff in that area. And our admitted transfer students are up approximately 2%. So overall, applications are up by 1,764, which is 12.5%, and admits are up 431, which is 4.5%. Now, members of the board and Mr. Chairman, this past month, the provost and I met with each college dean and department chair to have a conversation and receive updates regarding initiatives to enhance our recruitment, retention, and our graduation of students in their very respective areas. We had some excellent presentation by the college deans and their department chairs and other colleagues, and today I thought I would defer and give my time to one of the colleges that provided this update that was very innovative, very creative, and will give you a sense of the extra efforts that our faculty, our departments, our college deans go in attracting the best and brightest at our university. So at this time, I'd like to invite Dean Beverly Keel, who is the dean of our world-class media and entertainment college, along with her colleagues, to provide an update to you and this presentation.
We're honored to be invited to share our innovative efforts to increase yield in the College of Media and Entertainment. Of course, the best way to recruit students is to have the best programs, which we do. I believe that's why we have the best enrollment performance of the entire academic year of all colleges. But of course, that's not enough. You can no longer let the work speak for itself. You must also let everybody know what you're doing through traditional and social media and work to form a connection with admitted students. In other words, we have to toot our own horn, and we have to toot it loudly. So I'm proud to unveil a new commercial our students and faculty created that will have its broadcast premiere on CMT on April 29 during the Judd's Concert, which you'll remember was held at Murphy Center. Thanks to the generosity of President McPhee and the brain power of Andrew Ottman, we have an exciting new way to share our story, and you're the first audience to see it. This is the first time our students have produced an MTSU commercial that will be broadcast nationally. They were able to do this because we teach them the skills to create projects like this for companies all across America of all kinds. So I want to invite media arts professor Ally Salton up. She's responsible for the commercial, so I want her to talk about it and unveil it.
All right. Hello, everyone. I'm Ally Salton, associate professor of our filmmaking program, which is a new concentration in video and film production. And I'm here with my students, who helped me make this commercial, and they were in front of the camera, they were behind the camera, they were integral in helping us get the equipment set up and filming. I'd like to introduce them to you. All right, over on the end, we have Josh Smith. He's a filmmaking major. Lily Manjara, music business major. Grace Chu is a filmmaking major. Emily Rank is an animation major, and you will see her work shortly. It's incredible. And Taylor Forman is a filmmaking major and helps me film it. She's a future cinematographer. And legendary Ned just rapping on the, on the commercial, and we're really excited. This is the first time anyone's seen it outside of our college, so enjoy.
The stars come to Middle Tennessee State University, and students come here to become stars, no matter what they pursue. We're the only college of media and entertainment in the world, just outside the heart of Nashville.
Our curriculum and facilities are cutting-edge, and our relationships with industry leaders give students an edge over the competition. You can get real-world experience with degrees in recording industry, media arts, journalism, and strategic media, and more. Media and entertainment at Middle Tennessee State University. Learn to shine.
The theme song that you hear was also created by our students. I am eager for commercial songwriting professor Beth Rogers to tell you about it. Pay attention to the blend of country, rock, hip-hop, and rap, because I think this really captures who we are as a college. In 2023, we train students to work in every aspect of the music business in all genre, and as the song says, we do it all.
Hello. So I teach songwriting for film, TV, and gaming, and in my class, I had my students write a song for this commercial as one of their assignments. I also invited other students within the recording industry to submit songs as well. So we had 14 original songs written for this commercial. The song we went with is "We Do It All," which was written by Kelty Gray and Peter Van Wick and Philip Beamer, who's not here. And then we had legendary Ned come and be our guest rapper on it, and Ned is signed to our student-run record label, Match Records. We recorded it in Studio D on campus, and, and Peter produced it. Did I say that already?
No.
Okay. Peter produced it. And yeah, we're just, we're really happy with how it came out. We think it represents our college really well, and we hope you enjoy it.
Very good.
(Applause)
(Music)
Stand tall. Yeah, let's go. Woo! We do it all. 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 Mic check, one, two, everybody listen. When you do it like this, ain't no competition. I'm talking B.I.G., V.I.P. Treat 'em like a front row seat, and make 'em pay attention. If I shoot for the three, then I ain't never missing. Cranking up the degrees like I was in the kitchen. Can't lose, got too much to prove. And when you do it all, it get too hard to choose. We do it all. Yeah. We do-
We do it all. We do it all. We do it all. Oh, oh, yeah, we do it, yeah, we do it. Oh, oh, yeah, we do it, yeah, we do it. Check it out, we bring the fire, create a brand new beat. We've got it burning brighter, can't you feel the heat? We do it all. 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 So we're cranking out degrees like we're in the kitchen. That's my favorite line. So we are wisely following the advice of President McPhee, who provides great direction on how we should improve our yield. We bring prospective students to campus because once they see us, clearly they're going to fall in love with us and immediately feel at home. Nothing can sell us better than we sell ourselves. We also go to where the prospective students are, whether it's their cell phones, their high schools, their hometowns. We offer scholarships when we can to help offset the cost of tuition. And finally, we are recruiting more at community colleges. Based on President McPhee's guidance, we've created a deep and wide philosophy, meaning that we cast a wide net to reach as many potential students as possible, and then form a deeper connection with our admitted students to try to turn them into enrolled students. One way of doing this is to make them feel a part of the CME family, that stands for our College of Media and Entertainment. As soon as they're accepted, not only do they receive a letter from me in the chair and a handwritten note from a student, but they also receive a package for the newest CME superstar. By branding it this way, it makes them already a part of our family. They receive a bag, a beanie, a T-shirt, a water bottle, and if our trustees will look under their table, you will see that you have a welcome kit. And if you're wondering why the bag gets cleared, it's so they can take it to concerts. We also provide a template for them to proclaim on their social media that they are Team CME's newest superstar. We hosted our inaugural mixer for those who have been admitted to the college. Proud to say we had about 80 in attendance with their parents, including admitted students and parents from as far away as Maryland, South Carolina, Texas, and Virginia. They met their upcoming classmates, got to know faculty, toured our facilities, student organizations set up tables, and our outstanding students were on hand to answer their question. And it's a way to build a deeper connection and relationship with our campus, which will hopefully convince them to enroll here. I encourage them to exchange contacts with at least two other admitted students so that they will have friends before they arrive on campus. We had an impressive faculty turnout, and we all agree it was so successful, we're going to do it every semester. We recently launched a contest for our admitted students to design their own class T-shirt. This again forms a connection with MTSU before they arrive, and after they arrive on campus, they can spot their fellow classmates by the ones wearing this shirt. And shout out to Katie Foss for this great idea. We've welcomed numerous prospective students to campus through our college-focused camps, including Come to Voice, the Journalism Camp, and our new songwriting camps. We provide several hundred tours of our Bragg Building every year. And finally, we add our unique touch to our portion of the customs tour that is curated and hosted by the chairs and me. As part of the customs meeting, I invite every student to lunch once they get on campus on my dime. But they have to email me or show up because I want them to take the initiative. Last year, only two took me up on it. This year, 17 took me up on it, which explains a little bit of my weight gain. This is a way to show how involved our faculty and administration are with incoming students, also meet personally with dozens of prospective students, and the chairs, of course, meet with many more. We also host visiting high school groups and hold the Blackman Collegiate Academy lectures. Our Christian Cafe concerts are also a draw. We've upped our game with our awe-inducing tour of our Bragg Building during Preview Day, which includes our new million-dollar XR studio, thanks to President McPhee, and two large recording studios. We have updated each department presentation, so now they all truly have the wow factor. We're constantly asked by our prospective students, how can we do it all? Of course, it's not enough to sit back and have the prospective students come to us, we must go to them, which we do through in-person visits, high school programs, and social and traditional media. We work closely with Andrew Ottman's office to spread the word about the innovative things going on in the college. We're hiring a communication strategist to improve our messaging and social media presence. We launched a campaign to celebrate our first-year students called Fab First that is shared on social media. This will make our current students feel supported and appreciated, and it also personalizes our college for prospective students. I also engage with parents on our Facebook page so that they can see how involved the faculty and the deans are here with students and parents, so we sort of remove those traditional barriers that are there. We're doubling down on our multi-level follow-up efforts because we know an acceptance letter is no guarantee that a student will enroll here. We send letters from the dean and the chair and handwritten postcards from current students in the department and the dean's office. We also have faculty calling admitted students. We enlist current students to text, to text them to see if they have questions for, of a fellow student. We follow up with students who have attended our preview days as well with emails and phone calls. We have created numerous videos featuring our students and faculty that are shared with prospective students. You can see a couple of examples right here, and they were used by the university as examples that other departments should follow. And we have created five new $1,000 scholarships, two for transfer students, and one for an incoming freshman in each of the three departments. This will give us something to talk about online and will provide another reason to engage with students. We've signed new articulation agreements with South Arkansas and are finalizing one with Northeast State Community College in Tennessee. So now I want to invite John Merchant, who is Chair of the Recording Industry Department, to tell you what he's doing.
Andrew told me not to touch the microphone, but I so want to. The Department of Recording Industry continues to serve as a signature program for this university and as a model for excellence in academics worldwide. Billboard, Rolling Stone, and The Hollywood Reporter have all recognized MTSU as a top music business program for the last nine years, and our faculty and alumni have won more than 30 Grammys in the last decade alone. Our participation in events like the Bonnaroo Music Festival and the Grammy Awards further lift this university's profile nationally. As noted, our enrollment has increased over the past three years, notably in commercial songwriting and audio production, which is up 5.6% this year. As of this morning, we have admitted 533 students for next year, which is 31 more than this, more than we were at this point a year ago, and we still have five months remaining before the start of the fall semester. For recruiting, we took a page from the 1985 Miami Hurricanes football program. The retention and recruitment and retention committee drew a circle with a 50-mile radius around campus, and we made it our goal that every student in that circle would know about our program. So to accomplish that, we contacted every school in this circle to share information about recording industry, offer campus visits, or for a faculty member to come visit. We sent links and literature to everyone who requested it. We've scheduled multiple campus visits, and we've visited more than 20 area schools to date. This semester, Professor Amy Macy traveled with our advisors to all of the recruitment events at local community colleges, including Motlo State, Vols State, and Nashville State. In 2022, we offered 178 faculty-led tours of our facilities to prospective students and their families. To date, we've offered 58 tours since January, and our busiest months are ahead. This semester, as you know, we launched the Music Business Online Degree to allow students from around the globe to complete our degree in a convenient, affordable way. And this week, we launched a promotional campaign in conjunction with Andrew and the folks in marketing, using a search marketing plan developed by our expert music business faculty. Finally, last week, I met with the MTSU Foundation, and we restructured the George Jones Scholarship to create a $5,000 gift, available exclusively to incoming freshmen. We believe this will be an ideal recruitment tool, and it gives us a reason to re-contact all the students who have come, who have applied or have visited campus since August of last year. These are just a few of the things that we're doing to extend the recording industry brand internationally and bring positive light to MTSU as we have for the past 50 years. Thank you all for your ongoing support, and I'd like to introduce my colleague and my friend, Marie Barnas, who is the Chair of the Department of Media Arts.
President McPhee and members of the board, as I'm sure you know, Media Arts is the largest, longest-running, and most comprehensive program for creative, creative media production in the state and in the region. From TV, live event production, filmmaking, animation, interactive media, photography, and media management, our students develop and create content that is literally in all households today, and viewed in traditional and streaming media modalities, and has been distributed and marketed for audiences and end users across the globe. We pride ourselves on our hands-on curriculum where the world is our classroom. From our studios, mobile production lab, our new XR stage, we attract students seeking real-world, hands-on opportunities to learn their craft and launch successful careers in media arts. Professor Merchant talked about his map and honing in on local high schools. In media arts, we are also planning to visit high schools around Murphysboro and Nashville, but we will also target Atlanta, where last year $4.4 billion was spent by the state of Georgia hosting 412 productions, represented by 32 feature films, 36 independent films, 269 television and episodic productions, 42 commercials, and 33 music videos between July 1st, 2021, and June 30th, 2022. It is crucial that we reach students in North Georgia and metro Atlanta and share with them what our department has to offer, so as to attract these students who can come to MTSU through the academic common market. And then they can, they can continue to work in our region. I've already made contact with Rockdale Career Academy in Conyers, Hills Grove High School in Powder Springs, Etowah High School in Woodstock, Cambridge High School in Alpharetta, and Alatuna High School outside of Kennesaw to come and be a professor for a day and talk with their students about coming to MTSU. These schools already offer classes in media production and technologies, and I want their graduates to come here. My Assistant Chair, Ally Sultan, will also be visiting area high schools around Nashville, and Mike Forbes, our engineer, already does and will continue to do several high school visits every semester with our mobile production lab. These schools include Catholic High School in Knoxville, Christian Academy of Knoxville, Hillsborough High School in Nashville, Independence High School in Franklin, Metro Nashville Career Fair Music City Center, Wilson Central High School in Lebanon, and Farragut High School in Knoxville. Lastly, from covering over 30 tours every semester for potential students who come with their families or with high school groups, including Blackman High, Creekwood, Clarksville, Cannon County, Renaissance, and Hillsborough, among others, to gearing up for attending custom sessions over the summer, to reworking our preview day presentations for potential students and their families, to developing a newly-formed marketing and recruiting committee in the department, media arts faculty are and will continue to be involved in recruiting and marketing efforts to gain commitment from newly-admitted students. And we are happy to be the ones to produce our new commercial for the college, for which you saw and heard, and which I hope becomes our new university theme song, and just remember when you see that commercial, it's media arts. Thank you, and I would like to welcome Dr. Katie Foss, the Director of the School of Journalism and Strategic Media.
Oh my gosh, my colleagues are amazing, and I hate to follow them. I wish I had a song, but alas. So I'm Dr. Katie Foss, Director of the School of Journalism and Strategic Media, a department that consists of a lot of different things, including advertising, public relations, media studies, visual communication, a variety of journalism concentrations, and our fastest-growing concentration in the college, sports media. I wish we could attach the word sports to everything. We are a quality-accredited program. Our students are constantly winning awards for their professional news stories, ad campaigns, and designs. The Broadcast Education Association recently ranked us as 11th in sports and 22nd for news and film and video, that's in the country of journalism programs. But we're not telling our story well enough, and we need to do more because we are amazing, our students are amazing, and we need to share that tale. What we've done is to continue to restructure and evolve our program to match student and industry interests and expectations. We've consulted with students, our advisors, professionals, and many others, which has prompted new modalities of teaching, courses, and degree programs, hopefully, if everything goes, you know, as planned, in advertising, public relations, and the Digital Media Master's Program, which will be completely online. We're in the process of developing our own ad and PR agency, so students are already working with real clients, we want to formalize that more, and have a space for it as well. We consistently offer hands-on experiences that venture far beyond the classroom, from covering Bonnaroo through reporting classes in Normandy, Paris, England, and Scotland, which is so exciting. We are committed to our community outreach and our engagement. We mentor high school students, we host the Come to Voice Camp led by Dr. Woodard and Dr. Blake, bringing middle school students from the Boys and Girls Club on campus. Our faculty regularly give lectures and workshops in the Blackman Collegiate Academy, as well as giving workshops to the Tennessee Girls in STEM and other campus-wide programs. We strive to connect with students long before they're applying for college, when they're still, you know, just having fun and thinking about social media as that thing they hope their parents will let them do. We are working on raising our visibility in other ways. We're implementing an ongoing strategic cross-platform social media campaign. We're redesigning our website to showcase more of our students' work. We have a regular newsletter that both admitted and current students receive, and to promote our program, we're placing ads in high school and college convention materials to really attract the best students, and amplifying our profile through an alumni speaker series, public scholarship, and regular press releases on current industry trends by our Social Media Insights Lab. In the School of Journalism and Strategic Media, we recognize the need to be forward-thinking, attracting students through unique hands-on experiences that lands them jobs, most of the time before they even graduate. Thank you.
So as you can see, we're trying to do it all. I am so proud of our students, faculty, and staff, and I hope someone will second that emotion.
I will second that emotion.
I second it.
No question about it.
Approved.
There we go, I'll second. Members of the board, Mr. Chairman, this is your university, the quality of faculty, staff, students is right in front of you, and it's, one of the reasons why we are regarded as one of the top college of media and entertainment, literally, in the world, that is not an exaggeration. We all are proud of you, Dean, your leadership, department chairs, outstanding students. Thank you so much for what you do for this great university. Let's give them another round of applause. Now, Mr. Chairman, in wrapping up, I would like to remind members of the board that we will possibly have the largest graduation class in the university's history this spring. We anticipate more than 2,600 students will receive their diplomas. On Friday, May 5th, 2023, we will have two ceremonies, one at 1:30 p.m., College of Basic and Applied Sciences, and the speaker is Bill Jones, an MTSU alumnus and successful professional in the banking, financial planning, and insurance industry. At 6:00 p.m. on Friday, we'll have the College of Liberal Arts, College of Media and Entertainment, and the speaker is Nick. And the speaker is Nick Duggar, MTSU alum, and very accomplished in multiple roles relative to television production. And then on Saturday, if we have energy and if we can get up after a long day on Friday, May 6th, we will have two ceremonies on Saturday. 9:00 a.m., the Jennings A. Jones College of Business and University College. Our speaker is Matt Cruz, MTSU alum, student, athlete, and a successful career in sports and marketing, event management, entertainment fields, as well as, he is the founder of the Big Machine Music City Grand Prix. Has been very, very successful, a graduate of MTSU. And last, but certainly not least, at 1:30 p.m., College of Behavioral and Health Sciences and the College of Education, and our very own, in this room, Trustee Pam Wright, an MTSU alum and great supporter of our university. An incredibly successful businesswoman would be our speaker. So you can see there's a lot going on at your university, and we do appreciate the support as board members and the strategic direction under your leadership, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you so much, and I hope you continue to be proud of your university. Thank you.
Well, closing remarks are brief. Thank you for allowing me to be your chairman. I enjoy it, and I'm pretty sure copying a friend of mine. Most nights when I go to bed, I feel like we've helped another child. So I'm confident all the hard work we've put in is paying dividends. Our relationship with administration has never been better. So that's good. I ask this for public, I hate to put it down or on anything, but I want, I don't want it, but I want you to assure us that we have an up-to-date action plan in the event we have an emergency.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In fact, I'm going to defer to the great Vice President Alan Thompkins. His office is responsible for managing our emergency management program. And I'm sure he'll tell you about the new signage, the training that has gone on. Obviously, we live in a democratic and an open society, but I will tell you that we are doing everything to make sure that we manage the risk associated with being an open campus. Alan, would you take a second and just give the board an update of some of the work we're doing in our safety and security?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman, for the question. So yes, we, of course, we hired Chief Cap last August. So he's been here, come from Chicago. And we've put in a lot of things since he's been here. We're doing the active shooter training all across campus, offering that at various times of the day and during the week. We've also hired an emergency management operations manager. So that is in place. As Dr. McPhee said, we have signage across campus, whereas assessing buildings now to look at, you know, is there improvements we can make? We've set aside funding for that in the past, so we still have that available. So we'll make that assessment and that plan will go to Dr. McPhee for approval. So several things in the hopper right now that we've been discussing. And I know Chief Cap has talked to Provost and many in academic affairs on those plans.
Tell them about the number of cameras that we have across campus and the blue lights that we installed just recently.
Yes, we have about 900 surveillance cameras on campus in various, all various areas. All our entrances are covered with up-to-date cameras, license plate reader capable. So we see who is going, coming from campus because we are an open campus. So, but we have that. We have call boxes at various locations across campus. I don't have the exact numbers, probably somewhere between eight and 10 of those. And those are strategically placed each time that we install one so that they get the most, you know, are the most useful and accessible by students.
Well, I apologize for the impromptu question. But it seems to be on, if it's not on our minds, it should be. So thank you for being here. God bless America, and we adjourn.